Good evening. We'll open the work session for Tuesday, January 7th. Agenda item one is a presentation of the Laurel Boys and Girls Club Task Force Report by Chairman Rick Wilson and Vice Chair Monique Holland. Ms. Holland?
Hello, how's everybody today?
Doing well, how are you?
Happy New Year, if I haven't said it before. I don't know if you've all had a chance to...
I don't know if you've all had a chance to take a look at the report and go through
it, and I'm sure if you have questions, please, you know, ask the questions. I'm just gonna kinda summarize this entire report for you. I kinda have some bullet point notes here that summarizes the entire presentation, but I'm familiar with everything that we went through in all of those sessions that we had in reviewing the fifteen inches worth of material that was provided from the Boys and Girls Club. So hopefully if you ask the questions, if I can't answer it, Rick's here today and, you know, I'll turn to him, so. So, excuse me, the task force was established by Resolution 2-13, agreed to by the Laurel Boys and Girls Club President Brown and the Mayor and City Council in February of 2013, that directed the task force to review the history of the club, city support to the club, financial review, youth programs of the club, city, county fundraising, government support, then provide findings and recommendations. Members included Rick Wilson, myself, Monique Holland, Gloria Arnold, Robert Di Pietro, Mickey Fink, Lionel Francis, Craig Frederick, Adrian Russo, Michael Sarage, Marcella Shepherd, Kenneth Taylor, Frank, Anna Stasio, I should know your, how to pronounce that, but forgive me Frank. Task force staff member and assistant to the co-chairs, ex-officio members Kristy Mills, city administrator Mike Lowsky, Director Department of Parks and Recreation, Michelle Saylor, Director Department of Budget and Personnel Services, Levitt Brown, President Laurel Boys and Girls Club. The task force found that while the club is an important service provider, it's not the sole or exclusive provider of youth programs in our community. Laurel is very fortunate to have a number of thriving organizations in our community that also serve our youth, and we heard from many of those during the many sessions that we had. A number of local youth service nonprofits testified that they offered scholarships and were breaking even. Those groups like the Laurel Boys and Girls Club turned no child away. The city voucher program is open to the city of Laurel residents that wish to participate in Laurel area youth programs and have a financial need based on family size and family income. Amounts are limited to a hundred dollars per child per season, and payment is always made to the youth organization and not the family. The city of Laurel currently spends about 1.7 million dollars annually to support parks and recreation programs. The task force presented findings and recommendations in terms of Laurel Boys and Girls Club's role in the community, membership practices, sports program operations, internal management challenges, board of directors activities, relationship with city, county and state governments, communications and public messaging, fundraising strengths and weaknesses, and recommendations for the future. And I'll expand upon that, those findings, a little later if you like. The task force requested an extensive body of documentation to be supplied by the Boys and Girls Club. Unfortunately, the task force was not able to make this documentation available in electronic format for inclusion in this report. However, it is available for in-person review by contacting the Laurel City Administrator's office. Throughout the task force deliberations, the status and history of McCullough Field was discussed. The bottom line is that the city bought the field from the Laurel Boys and Girls Club on June 4th, 2007 via a signed document completely transferring the deed for 273,000 and waiver of any back taxes. The city also waived all future fees for use of the field by the club. The task force and the president of the Laurel Boys and Girls Club agree that the fundamental impediment to achieving the strategic objectives of the club is the lack of resources. The task force found that the club currently has a significant structural deficit, for the most part driven by the cost required to maintain and renovate their historic building, where unfortunately the club inherited years of deferred maintenance. We project that without new funding sources and while maintaining current expenditures, this annual deficit will grow significantly in the future. Levitt Brown, President of the Laurel Boys and Girls Club, testified that their greatest needs are for funds of operations, for example utilities, and to, and access to capital to pay matching grants in advance of the required reimbursements. The task force made three strategic finding recommendations for the consideration of the Laurel Boys and Girls Club Board of Directors and the Mayor and City Council. The first one was to establish a Laurel area youth services commission to provide direct grants to qualified local youth services and applicants. Laurel Boys and Girls Club would be able to compete for operations funding via this program. The amount suggested was 125,000 annually by the task force members. Number two, the recommendation was to establish a revolving capital account that would be available for interim funding necessary for grants that require organizations to front the money pending the payment of invoices by the grantor. Again, this would be open to the Laurel Boys and Girls Club and other qualified service providers, and again, the task force recommended a suggested amount of 250,000 dollars. And third, the, we recommended that the city provide the funds necessary to hire engineer and rebuild, redevelopment consultants to fully assess and provide options for the restoration and future use of the historic Laurel Boys and Girls Club facility. During our meeting, we found that there was a lot of discussion about the needs of the building. It didn't appear that they had actually commissioned or ever ordered a report, and that was something to assist to make sure that as they plan even for the future and as, and if the city is going to become a partner in some respects, that we all were very clear by a qual, by a firm that was qualified to understand what the needs of the building were going forward, currently and going forward. The task force met for eighteen hours and nine televised public meetings. We heard from a large member, a number of citizens during eight formal public hearings, and individually, we met privately with an even larger number of additional citizens, public officials, and subject matter experts. We also completed many additional hours of homework reviewing a stack of documents over fifteen inches thick. The overall final report was unanimously approved by the task force member present at our final meeting on September 24th, 2013. So all of the members, including the Boys and Girls Club representatives, I think with the exception of Lionel, who was out sick, prayerfully, he's doing better now, unanimously approved the recommendations that I've just read to you today. So, and I'm opening up to questions unless you want me to dive into some of the recommendations on the specifics that we had.
Before you do that, Mr. President, were the Boys and Girls Club notified about this evening's meeting?
No, we, we, I notified the chair and the vice chair. This is their show.
Oh, no, so they, they don't know this is going on?
I have no idea. Not, not that, the entire task force wasn't notified.
The notice was in the paper.
They were notified?
The notice was in the paper.
Okay, thank you.
Before, I, I think, I'll give the council a chance to ask some general questions, and then we can delve in.
Okay.
So before I start around the table, I first wanna commend you, Ms. Holland, as Vice Chair, Chairman Wilson, and all of the members of the task force. I mean, you had an audacious task in front of you, and as you've stated, fifteen inches of documents to review, hours and hours and hours of testimony and discussion, research. So I think what you presented to us is very comprehensive and detailed and thoughtful recommendations and findings. So with that, counsel, I'll start with Mayor, okay?
I wanna make sure Ms. Holland knows I'm not reading my email. This is a report I'm reading. Actually, I did wanna make sure the council was aware and the chair and the, and the co-chair this evening. We did forward the report and recommendations on to our bond, bond council for review and input because as, when you get into some of the recommendations that requires bond money and other things possibly being used. So we have not, to my, Ms. Mills is out sick, and I was talking with her last week. I know they have it, but I have not heard whether we got a response back or not yet. I too, before we go around to council, wanna thank you and, and the members of the task force for all the work that you all put into this. I know it wasn't easy. I know there were some difficult times, but I think there was a lot of expertise within this task force that I think can and could help if people listen and, and participate fully. So I'm glad you all are here tonight. I'm glad we're taking this up, and we look forward to continuing dialogue with the task force members as well as administration looks forward to working with the council.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So we'll start with Councilman Ricks.
Just a couple...
Yeah, just, just based on what Ms. Holland has presented to us thus far, then we'll continue our discussion.
Just based on what she said now?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. I, I will, I will waive that apparent disappointment without delving into other issues.
Okay. We'll, we'll go into more detail as, as we progress. Councilwoman McCrory?
Yeah, extremely thorough. I mean, anything that I could think of was in here, and that, that's amazing that you took everybody's voice involved here, and I commend you and Chairman Wilson for your work on this. And again, as the mayor said, I'm sure it was hard at times. Mine are very specific questions, so perhaps when we get to those areas, that's why I bring that up.
Okay, all right, great. Councilwoman Nicholas?
I wanna thank you too. Well, thank you very much.
I've seen you a lot around Laurel. We're neighbors, we're...
But thank you so much. I, um, this was a very time consuming, it's a lot to read, we all did a really good job, so I thank Chairman Wilson as well.
Thank you.
I'll have questions.
Okay.
Councilwoman Les?
Yeah, I wanna thank Monique and Rick and all the members of the committee, and more importantly, everybody that gave testimony from the different organizations. Let me just make a couple of observations.
Okay.
I'm not gonna ask for an answer now, you, when we get to it.
Okay.
Um, one of the goals of, in the, what you just said and what I read was to look at internal management challenges.
Mm-hmm.
So, a couple of things. I in fact pulled the returns that were on GuideStar, so I could actually look at the returns line by line, 'cause that's, I'm good at that. Some things I'm not good at. And, and actually, I'd pulled that the returns were filed at that point before the first meeting. I came to the first meeting for...
Mike, could you pull the microphone to you, please? Thank you.
I came to the first meeting for about an hour, and then I received some very good political advice from my wife, stay the hell out of that room when they're meeting, let them do their work. Don't sit in the back of the room, don't, and I didn't. But I did watch all the meetings. Let me come back to the internal management challenges. One of the things that was stated twice or three times in this report, the, the big report you gave us, there it is. You asked for the, you ask for the, um, the management letter. Now, management letter is very crucial in any kind of audit, and also the opinion letters. They might not wanna share the opinion letters, but since we were looking at internal management challenges, I would think that we'd wanna see, at least the committee and maybe the council in, in the, if they were kept in the custody of the city administrator. And they were indicated that they were gonna come, and we never got them, because I specifically asked, um, City Administrator Mills about them, and I did, I appreciate Marty and, and the administrator, city administrator furnishing all the documents so I could take a look. That's one, number one. The, the last engineering report, I'll just make the observation, was done 200 and 2,000 something one, zero, but it was a thumbnail report if I remember correctly. Okay?
That's correct.
So nothing's been done since then, but everybody's watching with their eyes what's happening, and the building's starting to fall down. But let me make one other observation, and we can talk about that, maybe we get to it. There was this statement made several times during your hearings by the advocate for the club, that without an indication of participation by the, the city, it was hard for them to get any grant money. Forget the dollars and cents for a minute. So what I find is that in 2007, there's a line in this report, in this tax return, says value of services or facilities furnished by a government unit to the organization without charge. What you do is you quantify those, you put them in there, whether it's five dollars or 50,000 or 100,000. Then they disappeared from 2,000 on. I assume that was to make a point, that they weren't getting do re me, but I find it incredulous to me that they would exclude this out of their return. Just amazing. But the interesting thing was, this is the 2011 return, they deleted it, but they had included it in the 2010 return. So they ended in 2010, but then you go to the 2011 return, eight, nine, 10, 11 are all blank. So that then, in my mind, calls into question this return. The returns. I'm not an auditor, that's not what I do. I just look at numbers on returns and what blanks are filled in. So again, I, I find that, that's just an observation I made. The last thing is, um, to, to get, to get an engineering report, I'm sure it's gonna be very, very expensive on that building. I don't know how much it's gonna cost, but just an observation. When Mayor Casola was alive, I've said this before, he had me crawl through that building before the county turned it over to the Boys and Girls Club. It was in bad shape then, and if I remember correctly, we had already replaced the bridge floor supports, Marty, is that correct, for the termite damage in the middle there? It was really bad there.
The connection between the two ends.
Right, okay, so we had done that, the city had done that. There was, uh, the boys, the, the senior citizens thought maybe the, the stage was gonna fall down. Well, it wasn't gonna fall down, the stage wasn't gonna fall down, but we went ahead and sent somebody in to take a look at that. So there was a lot of work being done up to the point where the Boys and Girls Club took it over. What happened was, and I don't know, they, we, in the report, I'll make one other observation, they talk about the cost of renovating the windows in the main part of the building. And yet, it was my understanding, at some point, they had some money to do that, and it didn't get done. That's the part I don't understand. But again, it's just an observation, and I'm just drawing upon what I had as far as some notes in a box of stuff that I've kept over the years, and what I saw in the report. So again, those are my observations, Mr. President, and I'd be glad to see what the vice chair and the chair have to say about those.
Thank you, Councilwoman Les, you're honored.
Thank you. Yeah, I can, I can speak to, to some of this. I think that in the management letter, we did, they provided one management letter at a meeting, but they wouldn't, they would let us see it. They passed it around, and they wouldn't copy it for us. So I recall that that was an issue, and that was an issue amongst the task members, that they felt that they should have been provided with the materials that they were requested, because the point of this was to create a record and a thorough and detailed analysis so that we could, you know, make some decisions. So they did, in one meeting, pass around the letter. I actually have, I didn't bring my big stack of documents here, but they would not provide it on the advice of, they said their...
Yeah, that wasn't, that was on advice of council.
Advice, their advice of council, yes.
Their, their, the guys that wrote the management letter.
To not share it?
To not make it a public document.
Yes.
And at that point, what I suggested, what I said, sorry for buttoning in.
No, no, that's...
What I suggested was, I didn't wanna get, if there was some sort of privacy thing, I didn't wanna get the city, 'cause we were a creature of the city.
Right.
I said, okay, we're, we don't, we're not gonna take possession of the letter until this gets worked out. And so we did never, we never...
That's right.
As a, as a task force, now individual members might have done something, but as a task force, we never took that information in, 'cause I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna get the city in a jackpot where they violated some thing of the auditor.
Yeah, thank you. And we are aware of a lot of, moving on to the second issue, so that, that should cover the issue on the management letter. As for the, a lot of work on the building by the city, I think that the Laurel Boys and Girls Club did acknowledge that there was a lot of work that had been done by the city. In fact, most of the work that had been done over the years by the building, by the city, to the building was done by the city. And in fact, when I've had, I had discussions sometimes after the meetings with some of the members, specifically Levitt Brown and Russo, and there was a, a comment made that in our discussions, that if they had to get to the point of closing any portion of the building, it would be where the gymnasium was and not the portion that had been mostly maintained by the city. So through all of conversations, they did not dispute that the city had, which is a good thing, that the city had, had done things that, to help them in, in keeping the building safe for the children who were in there. As for the windows, I recall that that was a situation where they had to have matching grant money, and that money was available for a period of time, and they had a number of years to use it, but they had to actually have the money, that before they could take down that money, and they ended up, I recall, unless I'm speaking of another issue, that they lost that money because they never were able to provide the matching funds for, for that money. So they, they had requested, I think, at one point, an extension to keep that grant money available. I think the county did provide an extension, or the Maryland Park and Planning, if, if it was a year or so, to allow them additional time to raise the money to, for the matching, and it didn't occur. So that's what I know about that.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Holland, as we, as we progress, one of the things that I found, I was most interested in, in the report, was finding out more information about the organization's fundraising efforts. And, and, and you just pointed to the fact that they couldn't take care of certain capital things because there was, there was no matching money. So I'd be very interested if this was something that came out during any of the discussion, any of the meetings, about a fundraising plan, a fundraising committee, any concerted effort by the club to very seriously launch some fundraising effort. My presumption is that as part of your research, and this, I, I'll form this more in a question, in your research and, and review, and particularly looking at perhaps other organizations and how they fund themselves, I have to presume that fundraising was a large part of it, whether it's carnivals, whether it's raffles, whatever, car washes, whatever they may do. So I'd be particularly interested in learning more about what the club's plans have been to date and in the future to, 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 to raise funds to help support their programs.
Now, that was, it's, I'm glad that you asked me that question, because that was something, as we got the fifteen inches of material and I started going through them, is I spent a lot of time on.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of the comments and concerns that I had initially were focused on the fundraising. And because I feel that any organization, nonprofit or otherwise, they need to be able to show that they have, that they're viable and able to, you know, convince others that, you know, they're doing a good service. I mean, it's, it's without question that they're doing a good service for the community, to the children. However, if, you know, if you're not able to raise your money, that shows significant weaknesses within an organization. And so during the presentations that we had received, the many hours that we sat down, at one meeting, as part of the materials, President Levitt Brown submitted two different reports from two nonprofits that he wanted to model their club after. And so as we were talking, and he, he went through various components of the things that they offered and, and what he wanted for ultimately to happen at the Laurel Boys and Girls Club, and how he saw that growing. And one of the things that I honed in on that, on both of those reports, I think one was the Laurel Boys and Girls Club out of New York, and I think the other was a Midwestern, Omaha. And the one thing that I honed in on was that both of them, in both of those ones, those clubs that he was modeling, that he wanted to model them after, that they raised between 35 and 40 percent of their own money. And that was actually something that I asked him during the meeting, or asked the representatives of the club during the meeting, well, you know, I think you should raise at least 35 to, to 40 percent of, of your money. Now clearly, the club, like every other organization that relies on public funds, has taken a hit since 2009. You know, the economy, you know, resulted in a lot of people that would normally help not being able to help as much as they have, and that was reflected in the tax returns. Each year, you saw that there was a drop in their fundraising efforts. With that being said, however, there was no person, you know, typically when you have a time, a, a hard time in a business like that, you know, it's, it's kind of, the, the one thing that we look for, for example, when we're managing a hotel, or we're looking at whether we're gonna help a borrower, is when times get tough, the last thing that you get rid of is your marketing and salespeople, because if you do that, you're dead in the water. You already know that you're at a disadvantage, and so if you eliminate that payroll position, then you're definitely not gonna continue to be able to compete. So to me, that was a, a key component they didn't have, and, and their response to that is they didn't have the resources to be able to have a full-time person. All of them were going to be required in the future to participate in the fundraising. Primarily, it seemed that Levitt, Brown, and Russo spent a fair chunk of their time seeking fundraising from, you know, the various sources and, and trying to increase that. But we also had, and I, and I have the report, there were some things that we, that came out of that, that we wanted, or we made a recommendation to. And we, we thought that there were some things that they weren't doing, that they could strengthen and, and make their, their fundraising better. And one of those was rental income. You know, I noted throughout the meetings that every nonprofit or organization who was using the club wasn't paying to use the club. And, you know, they have to survive, just like the Boys and Girls Club has to survive. So I understand the, the idea and their thought process of wanting to be an incubator for new and small businesses, but you gotta help yourself first. And so that was something that, one of the recommendations that came out, and, and as we were going through, what we would do as a task force is we would send our recommendations to Rick. Rick and Frank would work tirelessly to catalog those, and the ones that ended up on this report were pretty much the ones that there was a consensus. You know, there were, at least he may have gotten a member who, two or three members who said the exact same thing, or sometimes it was unanimous, many of us said a lot of the same thing. So that was one of the things, and they didn't disagree with, with that. Explore establishing a program for nonprofit incubator, that was a wonderful suggestion by one of the task force members, that enabled 15 nonprofits to rent a cubicle for, say, $400 a month, that would, with a central copier and fax machine that would bring in a stable income resource. I mean, they have that, they have the capacity to be able to do an incubator, especially, and that was also a way of continuing to help those, those small businesses, which is, which was a, seemed to be a key part of what they thought was their important role in the community. We suggested hiring a part-time professional director of fundraising, okay? If you can't afford to do that out of the gate, full-time, then that person, again, who has the marketing capabilities as well, would then be able to devote most of their time to establishing a fundraising goal and a plan, and seeing how they're gonna carry that out, and, and making sure that is regularly brought up at those meetings that they have to say, hey, we're well below where we had, you know, anticipated we'd be, so we need to do more. And to sit there and brainstorm together as a, as a collective body to see what they could do to raise more money. We also thought that they should have membership drives to cover overhead, that even someone who was part of the community but doesn't participate in programs would really want to participate in funding, especially for the programs, especially, you know, there's a lot of people who live in Laurel, and this was stated during the meeting, whose kids have gone through the program. There's a lot of people at this table who've gone through Laurel's and Boys' Club, and so I think... And so I think the consensus was that no one was really against, you know, what they stood for and the, the services and programs that they were offering. But before you start expanding programs, you need to, you know, be consistent about having the resources to fund current and existing programs. We also suggested that any kid who was part of the program, that they take ownership, and that they be part of the fundraising process, because we talked about that too. And many of the programs didn't have ongoing, regular fundraising requirements where the kids were required to, you know, say, you know, they're gonna participate in whatever fundraising activity it is, and let's say if they're not able to sell that amount, that they would contribute a minimum number of $100 or $200. And I, that was one of the suggestions I had made as well, because in all of the activities that my kids have been in throughout Laurel, whether it be the Laurel Boys and Girls Club, or the, you know, the Rec Center, or what have you, if there was a program, there was a particip- or just, you know, outside recreational, there's always been that component. So I thought that that would be very helpful to them in raising money. So there were a lot of suggestions that came out of it. I know I highlighted in this report a couple of additional components. I can't seem to find the page just, oh, increasing the membership fee for the kids, because we also found that their fees were lower than the other organizations that had presented to the club. Outside of that, and it didn't, I didn't make it into the report because I didn't get a lot of, all the feedback from people that I wanted, and I kind of wanted other clubs to provide responses to me in writing, and I got a lot of responses verbally. So I, I didn't wanna put my slant on it, but I actually called every Laurel Boys and Girls Club in Prince George's County. And I tried to reach either their president, their treasurer, or their secretary. And what I wanted to know was, where is the majority of your dollars coming from? How do you make programs work? The overwhelming majority, and so, I mean, it may not be a part of this report, but I have my notes and I have them at home, and I know I emailed them to Frank, so I'm sure if, if, if we were called on it, we would be able to refer to it, at least even the names of the people that I, I spoke with. Ninety, all of them said 90% of their money came from their fundraising efforts, from fees and registration. There were a few clubs, particularly Beltsville, that seemed to get $5,000 stipends here and there from the county. But for the most part, none of them had had any donations above $5,000 in any given year, and it wasn't a consistent year. So I, so I would even go so far as to say, to, to question, well, if you got $5,000 in 2012, did you get $5,000 in 2011 or 2010? Well, no, it doesn't work like that. You know, they would explain to me the county, but, you know, our local government doesn't do things that way. We gotta get in line, and it's our turn, and then we get some money. The one thing that I did discover as I was doing that survey, if you will, is that many of them are not challenged with the building. That's simply the fact. I, I, I had a list of questions that I was asking, well, where do you store all of your equipment? Many of them had, had a shed that was on a county field that they could utilize, that was of substantial size, and they had fundraised for that shed and made sure it was locked and secured. But it was in a well-lit place that made it, you know, that, that helped to ensure that, you know, they retained the equipment and stuff that they kept. So they, even, I got a lot of feedback from them that, you know, they thought we were doing a great thing, and, and even taking on this issue, that the city was taking on this issue and reviewing the Boys and Girls Club, that the Boys and Girls Club in general could use help, that, you know, funding is down overall. So a lot of the same concerns that the Boys and Girls Club have are not unique to the other clubs, with the exception of the building that they have.
I have two things that I'd add to that, and I think Monique covered most of it. It's they, the last strategic, the last strategic plan that the club did was 2010, and they identified fundraising as one of their areas for improvement, and tried to bu- build a cohesive program to do that. I think it boils down to, and as many of you have said and you've known, if, if the Boys and Girls Club, they generate enough, almost enough funds, to, to pay for their programs. What they lack is monies to, to keep the building going. So if they were like any other institution that we interviewed, that came and testified that didn't have a building, they'd be in fine shape.
Yes.
They can, they can make it with just their programs. What they can't do is generate the additional monies that they need to, to manage a 100-year-old building. That's what it boils down to.
Because the utilities are extensive, you know, by, by themselves.
And the, the rental income and the other things that they generate don't close the gap.
Understood.
That's what it boils down to.
So those, the overall, those were a lot of, I mean, we spent a lot of time, we also discussed, you know, scholarship setting criteria consistent with the city's voucher program for people, you know, that they, they did mention that there's a number of kids, and I believe that, that they assist who can't afford to even pay their fees. And so, you know, there's a lot of people, kids that they help, that they don't allow to pay at all. But they didn't seem to have a set program for accountability for, you know, I don't know what kind of paperwork these kids had to provide. But I did review the Laurel City Boy, Laurel, I mean, the City of Laurel's voucher program, and thought, and made the recommendation that if they're going to continue to do that, that at least be consistent with the paperwork in terms of what's required from each of those families that are assisting those kids.
Counsel, Councilor Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just, the, they said they had done a strategic plan in 10.
Mike, you gotta pull that closer.
I'm sorry. You can't hear me?
When your voice drops, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay. That, I mean, again, I, what I did, as I said, I got the returns off Guide Store and, and sort of scrutinized them and compared them, and based on what I heard in the hearings. So in 2009, which was filed in 2011, I guess after the 2010 report, they had $67,000 in sports team fundraising. And I think the specific question was asked about that, and there was some comment about didn't wanna have the children raising funds. Okay, so, but they realized $87,000 that year from fundraising. Now, the next year, it went down to $9,000, and then it went to nothing, of course, in 11. I know we also asked about the bingo. I worked bingo when my kids went to the Boys and Girls Club for about a year. It was always a moneymaker, you know. So when I look at the 10, 10 return, says that they had revenues of $106,191. Good number, except when I look at 11, it's exactly the same number. $106,191. As I said earlier, these returns, if I'm not an auditor, but that jumps out at me. There's a message there when you have it down to $106,191. And I think you all asked a question, well, aren't you losing money? And they said they were making money. Well, they lost money, they made money in 11, and then in 12, or in 10, and then 11, it went down to $2,000. I don't know what's happening with bingo there, but I know when I worked up there, and that's been 25 years ago, they were making money because they were all volunteers in there running the bingo. Every person on the floor, every person calling the numbers, every person selling the things at the door, there was all volunteers. I don't know.
So let me, let me try, Mr. Counsel.
I mean, and that would raise, I mean, so that would raise the question in my mind. Are they paying people to run the bingo?
I, I don't know the answer to that. Not, not on any piece of paper that we saw. We, we asked the same question about bingo. You know, if it's losing money, why are you still doing it? And the question we got is, oh, those, it has improved.
Yes.
We got no evidence of it. The other thing you all gotta understand is, our review of the, of the finances, we did not do a forensic audit. Right? We did what they gave us. It, to be perfectly honest, it was very difficult to match things, you know, multiple different times. I'm not saying anything on board, but it was very difficult to track year to year. On any given year, paperwork pretty much went into the 990. But if you try to look year to year, like I know you would do, and I would do the same, it was very difficult. And I think it might be just how things got booked, you know, and every budget exercise, you know, you group things differently.
Okay.
So, you know, I assume noble intent, and I went from there, but I think we all had very similar questions about the bingo program. Matter of fact, Mrs. Arnold, I think, was the most strident.
Right.
And, and, and point blank said, why are you running a program that's losing money?
Right, okay.
And, and I, I do believe, if I could piggyback on that, comment on that, is that they did provide audits, you know, that were attached to some of the returns that they had. So, you know, we're not, we're not licensed accountants, so we can't dispute or question what's been provided. Again, you know, we had some questions and concerns, but we saw some, you know, some of the audit reports too, and audit findings, so, you know.
We, we had on the team very experienced business people who had many questions. But again, it, you know, we, we weren't, we didn't do a forensic audit. I'm not saying there's anything there. I, I really don't think there's, you know, I think it's all about giving year to year in a volunteer organization, trying to get things and match them up and do all that is difficult to do.
I understand.
They lost their executive director, I believe, in, what, 2010, 2011, somewhere in that timeframe. And I'm sure things got really tough with the, the team of folks that they had there.
And I don't believe that we want to give the impression that anything improper was going on. Certainly, certainly not. I know Mayor Mo had a comment, of course.
I, I just had, follow-up. You talked about the building, how it was an impediment. And I think the task force, what I read, agreed with that. What, what was their response? Any, agree, disagree with that? The representatives?
I think generally, they don't believe that the building is an impediment. I think they believe that over the years, I mean, they've said, and I'm not gonna say what they believe, what they had said to us during those meetings were, well, we've put this money into the building. If you look at the concerns that were there when we took over, it's better. But again, we can all physically see from the outside that there's still a lot of concerns and that the building is falling apart. And I even toured the building several times, and, you know, Levitt and I had a frank discussion at certain points, like, you know, he would say, you know, the building's in good condition. I'm like, I don't agree with you. And so I think that they were very receptive to our recommendations. And at the end, I think ultimately, they did agree with us that they need to look at, you know, how best, you know, they could fix the building. I think they were, they weren't unhappy that we put in the report and the recommendation to get an engineering audit. I just don't think that's their area of expertise. And I think that they think that if they, they put in a lot of money over the years into that building, and so they think it's, it's fine, but, you know, from a professional standard of, you know, how a building is supposed to be and what's required to get a use and occupancy, and, and maintain a safe building, I think it, it still has a, a lot of issues, and it's going to continue to have a lot of issues without significant capital.
I, I'd agree with that, Mr. Mayor. I think from the standpoint of the Boys and Girls Club, what they testified to is that the building is a strategic advantage. But you gotta understand, and we put this early in the report, that the Boys and Girls Club of today is much different than the one that my kids came through. The Boys, Girls Club of today sees themselves as a service provider for lots of services beyond sports programs. If all they were gonna do is sports programs, I think we'd all agree they don't need the building. But in their vision, it's their vision, that building becomes the, the location where you can provide all of these other services. Now, how you get the funding for that, I don't know if there's a, a real plan there, at least in my estimation. But that's where they're, I think that's what Mr. Brown said multiple times, is he sees that building as a strategic advantage. 66,000 square feet, I don't know if that's accurate, but that's the number they quote. And, and for them to be able to run all of the different programs they wanna provide to the youth of Laurel, they see that building as that. And now, where they get the funding to keep a 100-year-old building alive and up to the code standards that you would need to put children in it, and all, you know, do all the things they need to do, I don't know if there's a plan beyond public monies to get them there. I didn't see, and we put in the report, that, that short of public monies, there was really no way to do that. Now, they cite, you know, other communities, both in the Maryland area and elsewhere, where public monies are provided. If you, if you go to the DC model, I think Mr. Rex knows this one, basically the city provides the building, and the club provides the services. That's kind of the model as a, as a vendor to the city. That's a model. Now, I don't know if...
Yeah, but that's their only, that's a little different model than, than what they're looking at. Because in, in, in our city, we provide programs, and the district, those are the areas that they, they partner with them because they have the facilities that can provide those. So that's a different, and that wasn't necessarily, they may have talked about it, but those are not the examples of models that were presented during the meeting. Now, I will say, during the meeting and before the meeting, I went through the building several times, and I would just call him and say, I'm coming by today. And he was very open, he made himself available. There were always at least, you know, no more than 20, but, you know, sometimes 10 to 15 or 20 kids in there in a tutoring program. There was always people in the boxing area, but no more at any given time, four or five people. But the boxing guy pays a set rent. He has a lease, he pays a set rent for his space. But the tutoring program, you know, they're using a large percentage of the space in the middle for the tutoring program. And I know they wanted to grow that program, so some, you know, some positive things were going on. But again, it's a big building for the amount of, of people. And again, I understand what the vision is. But that was a, a, a source of a contention for us, I think, that this, how do we make sure that these programs are available to the kids? And, 'cause I, 'cause we all agree that these programs are needed.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. President.
I, I think this, if I may, the District of Columbia model is somewhat of a, a different animal. It's not all just Department of Park and Recreation. They do partner with certain locations that have resources, and even the YMCA in, in some instances. So it's not a good model, I don't think, to use. And to kind of, when I actually took this to Puerto Rico to work on it, the bottom line for me here is that you've got the building against the operation. You can't have both. It's just, the money is just not there for both. So I think, from my point of view, they've gotta make a decision. Do you want the operation, or do you want the building? And if you want the operation, like the, I feel passionate they do, then they have to give in and say, we're gonna have to do something in order to safeguard these children, safeguard our program, and be able then to run their program in an efficient way. Just like you stated in this states, the money is there to run the program. The money's not there to run the building. And this city turned it down once because we didn't a study, we sent, we sent people in. It went all over that building, and engineers and everything, and that's why we didn't take it, because it was an albatross.
Mr. Rex, if I could, one of the things to keep in mind about the third recommendation that Monique mentioned, which is the engineering study, if you read that carefully, it's a little nuanced. I apologize for the, maybe the lack of articulation. That was intended to be, based on a, a recommendation from Mr. DePietro, that was intended to be not just an engineering study, but a consultant to come in and say, what about redevelopment? Right? Somebody that really understands all the options for redevelopment deals for that building. So engineering is obviously the first thing. Let's see how bad it is and what would be the order you'd fix things. But the other part of that was, is to get the right kind of people in there that would understand how, what would be on the table for multiple different ways you could do some sort of a deal with that building. You know, Mr. DePietro had some ideas that I think are excellent, and he's certainly in a position to understand many of those. There's probably lots of other options, but that's a piece of that, is to get somebody that could help look through what are all the things, and provide both to you and to the Board of Directors, saying, here's what, because I think you've all hit the nail on the head. We've been saying this for at least a decade I've been involved, is the building is the key. You can, you can fund the programs.
But I, I think my concern is, how much is an engineer going to cost us to go in there and, and do the kind of job that's necessary in order to, to prove to us that we wanna put our money into it?
I can't answer that.
I just can't imagine what that number's gonna look like. Now, as far as what they can do to make money with the building, if they're, if, and I, the times are tough, and I can understand where... And I can understand where maybe their bingos are not making it. But when you drive by the bingo parlor over in Anarunno County, night and day, that place is packed with cars. Somebody should maybe be investigating what their success is over there and bring it back to the Boys and Girls Club. Look at their model. They probably could even be paying people to work for them.
Counsel, I, I want to give Ms. Holland an opportunity to-
I'm sorry, I shouldn't-
No, 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 but, but to go into further detail in, in your presentation, because as we went around the table, you know, we all have other, more in-depth questions, so.
Well, I was going to talk about the to-do, on, break, you know, we talked about the overview, but we didn't get into in-depth on each of those points of recommendations. So I just wanted to-
Because a lot of these questions and concerns are actually about a lot of the things that we've said too. And so ultimately, our goal is to present it to the mayor and city council so that you can, you know, make a, you know, a good decision as to, as to what you think is the best thing to do for the, for the citizens and the children of the city. So that's what our goal is. So, we understand your concern. So if I can go, I'll just kind of go, you know, just an overview. It's all in the report. If you start on page four, I'm not going to read verbatim. I'm just going to kind of, I highlighted some things that I wanted to share with you in terms of just the overall recommendation and each of the, you know, major points that we hit. So, starting with membership. We talked about, membership needs to be defined going forward, as, as stated in their bylaws, or, or the definition, definition should be amended. The club should audit its members list against paid members before distributing the list. And keep in mind, there was unanimous, unanimous recommendation to the council of all of our findings. So, and those that were major controversy with the club, we discussed them, we revised them and, because we had work sessions as well. So, everything that I'm talking about in this report, the club agrees with. Okay? So, since-
It's the club's representatives.
Representatives. Yes, okay. Is it the, the board members that were, that were on the committee? I think was Russo was one of the members. I didn't know-
Mr. Serich.
And Serich. Because they were the only two that were on the committee.
Did you ever find out who was on the Board of Directors?
It's on their website.
Yes, yes.
The current board is on their website.
Yes. So, one of the other recommend, and I'm just going through the recommendations in each of the programs that I'm summarizing for you so that you don't have to read it all yourself. Since, since the club's fees are lower than any other organization, we recommended they include, they included and incorporated a twenty-five-dollar membership fee. That item alone, or recommendation, would raise another thirty thousand dollars annually, based on the number of kids that they currently have frequenting the program. We talked about the scholarship criteria, similar to the Laurel Boys and Girls Voucher Program. Under the sports program operation, we all noted that the club has changed its emphasis from being a purely sports program to a full-service youth program. And we talked about them strategically retooling the sports program to get each on solid footing before adding any additional programs. And so, we weren't, we didn't take issue with them adding other programs that was helpful to the children in the community, but that they get the existing programs, particularly the athletic programs, which have always been the traditional strength and core of clubs back on solid footing. We also suggested they take a realistic assessment about why the other programs left the club. They've had some very successful programs, who, some of which who came and spoke to us to give us an idea of how they raise money and how they operate. And, and we, we had in-depth discussions about them understanding why those programs left. If parents fundraising, children being vested in fundraising. We found that the club's fees were at the bottom of the range in the region. And again, this was not only based on discussions that we had, the information that was provided by the other groups, but also from the calls that I made to all of the other Boys and Girls Club in Prince George's County, and there are a lot of them. The task force recommend that it should be a goal to have every sports bro, program break even financially. Again, we, we suggest that as a goal, as you heard from, you know, Rick Wilson, for the most part, their programs are, you know, the, the fees that they charge are covering. It's, it's, again, it comes down to the building. The third item was internal management challenges. And again, the, the big issue there, that, that talks about the internally raising at least thirty-five percent of their own program for, and operational funds before asking the city and other external funding sources for assistance. That they realistically engage in assessment, long-term planning, to develop options for rehabbing the facility and a practical assessment of the total cost of ownership. We thought that was key as well. Talked about future rental fees and rental agreements and making sure that they come up with an agreement. I think at one meeting, I even suggested that I could help with an agreement. I later followed up with, with Levitt, and he said that they had gotten an agreement that they were using. So, he didn't need me to send an agreement. I could send it if I wanted, but they had gotten an agreement by the time I followed up with him on that. Every nonprofit organization should pay to use the club, as we talked about. Cash management, they should establish a more detailed budget with categories to track budget versus actuals each month. And expenses beyond a thousand dollars that have not been budgeted should go to the board for approval. An explanation of those expenditures must be provided to the board and stakeholders. And that was to make sure that there was a proper art trail of all the income coming in and what they're actually spending money on. The next item was internal management controls. We talked about them hiring an executive director, director and a grant writer, and that they should have monthly board meetings, because currently they're not having, I think they were having quarterly meetings. But we suggested they have meetings more often until they, on financial footing. Monthly assessment of strategic plan and goals. And because I, we all noted that the majority of the goals set in 2010 strategic plan still have not been implemented. Set timetables for returning existing debt. They had a, a loan that they had gotten, and it was being automatically renewed. And the assumption was that it was going to be renewed, but the date of which to repay that had already passed. However, the club felt confident that they would be able to procure future extensions if they asked the bank to do so. And evaluate the need for the existing bus that they had. I don't know if they still have the bus. But I, I noted when I reviewed the financials that, in, in breaking down the categories, that there was a lot of money spent on gas, transporting kids to and there. And typically in a lot of the programs that, and I, I recall mentioning this during the meetings, that my kids are in, parents carpool, people volunteer to drive. People are going to come and see their kids anyway. So, that would be a way to offset that. But they say that they give more exposure to the club by being, having the bus and having the ability to drive out of state to different colleges and give them, and have them do tours and different things that allow the kids more exposure and in turn, provide it more exposure to the club and to the city. So, I think that they, that they, you know, they took all of our recommendations and concerns on that.
I'm just trying to, go ahead.
Go ahead, try to wrap it up? Okay. Facilities management, control access, you know, to the building. I'm just going to hit on highlights then, because you all had the report. The Board of Directors should be responsible for strategic and succession planning. And we suggested listening, external organizations to assist with creating community-based strategic plans for one, three, five-year out. In relationship with the city, county and state governments, that they institute a new government outreach programs focused more than, or more than just obtaining resources. That they become an actual partner and even, you know, meet with the city and the county regularly to talk about the programs and the successes, you know, kind of like, you know, the MOgram, where you talk about, you know, what's going on in the city and, and that's positive and, and successful. And we already talked about fundraising. So, I mean, we really went into each of the categories that we summarized. Those are some of the things, you know, maybe they touch on some of the questions and concerns that you, you still have that you haven't mentioned. But we spent a lot of time. I spent one whole weekend just reading materials and writing notes and questions, so.
Mayor? Could you, I think it's important, did you all discuss the programs the city has and the things that they do? And I think it's important to hear from you all on what, what you heard from that and what you take from those discussions. I'd like to hear that.
The city, we did look at that. Some of the programs that they have, the city has them and some of the other nonprofits have them. Some of them were overlap. Some of them offered access to folks outside the county. I'm trying to think specifically which one they had that we-
So, we looked at that at, at a particular level to see if the, you know, as part of this Laurel, you know, the recommendation was, is there, there was some, I wouldn't say it was gross overlap, but there was some overlap. You know, the city kind of traditionally, Mr. Lotzky's here, but, you know, more adult-centered things, fewer children-centered things, and the club and the city have tried to de-dup. But one of the things, we took testimony from multiple youth organizations in the city that the city also partners with for fields and scholarships and things like that. And what we recommended was that we form some form of a Board of Directors, kind of the model that I think we all had in our head was the Emergency Services Commission. It kind of looks like that, where you can bring in these various folks from, from the City Parks and Rec Department, from the various independent youth organizations and the club, to sit as a board to then decide, you know, is there duplication? You know, one of the things with the Emergency Services Commission is it wasn't just about money. It was about, and Mr. Rix was a founding member, it was about, can we get all these organizations to figure out where they all fit together in the most cooperative way? And that's what we saw for the Laurel Youth Commission, was that idea of bringing in the soccer folks and the cheerleading folks and the club and everybody, and actually do a plan. One of the recommendations we had was that, that, that that group would then provide a plan, a strategic plan, back to the mayor and city council that said, and to the boards and to everybody, saying, here's how we're going to organize ourselves, so that there isn't as much duplication and, and that we, that we're looking forward, we're trying to anticipate needs. As, you know, as the city maybe wants to do program open space, that could be fed into it that said, oh, there's some space, we've got a ball field or, you know, those kind of things. To do that in a cooperative way with everybody at the table. Because, you know, the other groups that came forward all said that, you know, they, they offer these services, they're part of the, the city. One of the big issues when you get outside of city-run services is that, you know, I know the city has a structure where if you're not a city resident, you pay a little bit more. Those other programs don't work like that, right? So they're, they're providing to the broader community. So we'd have to find our way through that. But we've done that with the pool, we've done that with multiple things that the city provides, where we have a resident fee and a non-resident fee. And I think we could probably work our way through that. So that would be my answer to that.
And, you know, and I think that the city does do, from the information that I reviewed and with supply, do a pretty good job of making sure that, you know, of all the different programs that are offered, sports programs by the different organizations, a lot of them are coming to the city to use field space or your facilities. And even if they're not in the city, if they're close by, you know, Maryland City close enough to be able to benefit Savage, the city does provide, you know, space to some of those organizations to help fill the gap. And it does fill the gap, as I went through, like, you know, there's some soccer programs that, you know, maybe catered more to, you know, AAU-type league as opposed to more recreation, those kids who are not as good, you know, in those sports. So, I see that there was a lot of-
There's more need out there than we have capability.
There's a lot of need and we can fill.
And I think that nobody should feel like there would be, if you will, a poaching.
Right.
I think with, when you put the county, the city, the club and all the various clubs together, there's still not enough capability to service all the need.
And, and that's one of the things that led us to some of the recommendations on the financial side is because if, they all know they're coming for the same pot of money, all these organizations that their primary goal is to help the children and youth of this community, then they're going to have to work more collaboratively together. And so that would be the catalyst for what he was talking about with the youth service. Because, you know, they're, you know, all these organizations are not going to just lay down and say, well, the Laurel Boys and Girls Club can have the money every year. You know, they're going to say, well, wait a minute, okay, we, we all just decided this year that you had the greatest need, but next year, you know, we turned away fifty kids because we didn't have capacity, but now we want to expand that program. So, you know, it allows, I mean, just different-
Or the other thing we were thinking is if, if that board was meeting and they go, oh, the, the club's got a basketball court, they need a new floor. Why don't we all say this year, we're going to put that floor in there and we can all use it? Or, you know, the city has the, the Petro Center and the other places. We were kind of hoping that it would stimulate that over time.
Yes.
Let me go around the table again, because I know counsel has, you know, have questions and, and comments. And I, I just want to start off with asking about the leadership of the club, the Board of Directors. Did you find in, in your discussions and, and in your research, does the board hold open meetings? Do they announce? I, I think you mentioned that currently they, or they were at the time, that the task force was convened meeting quarterly. But do they announce their meetings? Do, are, are they open meetings where, you know, members of the club, anyone who's interested in understanding the operation, the business of the club can attend? Are they announced? And, and I think more importantly, elections. When are officers' terms up? When are elections held? And are those announced so that anyone who's interested in becoming a part of the leadership of the club has an opportunity to do so? Did you get a sense of how that works?
I know they have elections. I don't recall specifically about the openness of, a lot of it. I, I recall they said their meetings were open, that people could come in. I'm not sure if there's any publications or announcing, we did ask that.
We asked many of those questions. What we got back was, is they don't, they don't keep formal meeting minutes. They don't run a, what Mr. Brown said in the answer to that is that they don't run a formal program. I think the meetings are open to anybody that wants to attend. I don't, I don't, couldn't tell you one way or the other whether they're announced in any way to the broader membership. Mr. Brown said that, that, you know, they run the, they run the board meetings at the convenience of the board. And, you know, I asked for records of, you know, voting when new members were coming in, and they provided none of those.
And, and they, they did say as part of the meetings that the boards, you know, going forward, they would be requiring these board members to, I remember him talking a little bit about being more active in fundraising and raising money for, for the club and doing, and, and trying to set up procedures in, in the futures, you know, with the accountability and the records and all of that stuff. But, I mean, we discussed it, but extensively.
The other thing to keep in mind is, there's some definitional things with the club always. So, they have a sense of a board, a formal board, and then they have advisory members. Often the advisory members are people that run a program in the club, you know, could be one of the, what, what Mr. Brown would call a partner. And so they would be on this advisory, and, and the distinction of what the duties of the advisory versus the duties of the formal board, where, as any most volunteer organizations are not, not as strict as you would run the city, so.
But I think we would, we would all, at least seated at this table, agree that in order to, to begin strategic planning, to, to do fundraising, you know, planning, any of those kinds of things would take a, a Board of Directors that's together, that's meeting regularly and looking for input from outside of their board for people who have-
And I don't know if that isn't happening, we just weren't providing any evidence to that effect.
And that's why it's in our recommendations, and it's in our summary of recommendations, all of the concerns-
More formalize that and, and bring that under, provide meeting minutes, voting records, all those kinds of things was a recommendation.
And start at the 2010 strategic plan and figure out, you know, what you've done, what you need to do and how to get there.
I'm, I'm, I'm just going to make one, one other comment, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues here. But I, I, I find it interesting that an organization such as our Boys and Girls Club that's been in existence and operating as long as it has, seems to be, from what you've presented- from what you've presented, almost at its infancy again, starting to do this, planning to do that. I just find that rather interesting, because as Councilman Les mentioned early on, he'd been associated with the club at least 25 years ago. The club is running presumably efficiently and that sort of thing. So there had to be models internally that I would think the current leadership would take and begin building upon, or just keep going. It's just an observation.
So just a couple of things. One is, you know, I think Mr. DePietro can tell you some stories. The club is always, was challenged with the building. You know, for the longest time, right, the city paid rent for the Phelps Center, which was a significant amount of money. So that helped the club over the years. When the gambling was there, that helped the club over the years. So the club that we all know is different than the club today, and the burden of the building is really the difference. So I don't, I don't know if I'd agree that there weren't challenges in the past, but there were mechanisms that helped ameliorate them. And as we move forward, you know, the challenge of the building is really the new thing. So are they in their infancy? I don't know. But they've got to be able to generate funds above and beyond program funds to fund the building. Mr. Rick said it.
Yeah, so, and I was going to say that, he actually summarized it nicely, that's exactly what I was going to say. You know, the city, you know, provided substantial funding in the bingo. I think the bingo was substantial in being able to help that building. But, you know, again, that goes back to, you know, some of the concerns and questions that you raised about, well, how can we make bingo bigger? But that's, you know, we're coming with the findings, that's there, that's a concern that you have to consider.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So we'll go around the table. I'll start with Councilman McCray.
I understand what Councilmember Smalls was talking about, as far as getting back to basics, not only in perhaps the building, but also the programs, in that if the mission is expanding, which I think I'm hearing from you, that you have to get back to your moneymakers and the core that was addressed in its initial mission. I think everything circles. I think you always come back to this in a life cycle of a corporation. Back to the incubation, I think the incubation is great, but I also think too that we need to help Laurel Boys and Girls Club get on some solid footing before they're perhaps teaching others or asking, questions will be asked by someone standing in the hall or in leadership there, so that we don't create another 15 nonprofits that aren't understanding the basics here, perhaps. I was wondering, again, with the basics thing, any free audits done as far as energy? I mean, BG&E usually is very willing to do those and to determine what side of the building is the weather side, so if we put in 10 windows and it saved $3,000 a month? Was that approached during the task? You guys had so much to go through, I realize this.
I don't recall us talking about an energy audit, but I think generally we all felt that, given the condition of the windows, that it wasn't functioning very, you know, functioning the way it should to save on energy. And I'm not sure if, I think the first thing BG&E would say was, you need to get rid of these windows. I mean, in the inside of every window, there is plastic. And as I'm standing there, the wind's blowing, the plastic's blowing. I mean, so it's, you know, so I think an energy audit, they first have to secure the exterior of the building to keep the wind and the rain out before they can kind of tell them what you save.
That they do with the infrared lighting and stuff, that here's a hole versus a bigger hole over here. That's what I was wondering, if they'd actually gone through and done something, heat sensing throughout. I don't know.
That audit costs money. I had that done to my house.
Did you?
Yes.
The one thing about the windows is, of course, they have to be done to the historic-
Oh, we know, we just-
You know, what you put into the Anderson Murphy Building, and that's expensive.
Yes.
Owning a 100-year-old building on the historic trust is not an easy thing to do.
No, not at all. And then I think there was something addressed with a survey, but I think the membership survey was done in 2005, so I think a lot of the things that perhaps the club is looking at is dated at this point. And so, again, we get back to basics, and we go back to what the club wants and what this membership wants and what challenges they're facing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Les?
These are observations only. I won't challenge anything you did, you did a great job. Let me just, 25 years ago, what, three years, bingo, intermural soccer as a coach, daughter did, I wrote three calls. One of the things that, at this conversation with one of the directors on the club, I said, you know, I said for last year, the last two years, my son played select soccer in the NCL, which was Nash-Capper Soccer League. And we had to pay for that. He said, no, you didn't. I said, oh, yeah, we did. Paid a lot of money. And if a kid couldn't pay for it, if a child could not pay for it, the coach paid for it, the other parents paid for it, recognizing this child had some talent, but his parents just didn't have the wherewithal. That's just one, just going to make one observation. We sort of chased those programs away from the club. Select soccer was gone, that's what gave rise to all of that. And we've got Little League now, we've got Cheerleaders down in South Florida, a lot of things happened. And again, they're offering programs to everybody, and the key is the building. The building is on the historic register, it's falling apart eventually. Somebody is going to come and say, shame on you. Not on me, because I was, I happened to be in the chamber, as a few of us were, when the club wanted the building and the city turned it down, we advocated for the club to get the building, recognizing that they had $2 to $3 million worth of work to do on the building. We'll get grants, okay? Because the city didn't want it at that time, we didn't have the wherewithal. The last thing has to do with the basic, I mean, I've watched in DC what's happened with the police Boys and Girls Clubs, they had to sell their buildings. They had to get rid of them. They couldn't maintain a lot of those buildings anymore, because in order to maintain the program, get rid of the building.
They're too old.
That's correct. They were old buildings in DC, and that's what happened in DC. I watched that happen over the last 40 years. They had some interesting place, right up there in Capitol Hill, there was one. They had to get rid of it. They made the decision. And they've still got, they've got police programs, they've got several programs, they operate out of high schools and elementary schools, wherever they can get space. So that brings me to my last issue. All of these programs they want at the Boys and Girls Club, or they call them enrichment programs for youth families and community, they're all wonderful, but they got to pay their way. I read about a fifth-year high school that they've got running up there now, to play basketball, that's what it's all about. I'm not so sure the Boys and Girls Club can afford that kind of a program. And maintain a bus to take them out of state to play basketball. It gives exposure to what? 19 players that are playing basketball that want to make, you know, have to get that fifth year, have to get their scores up or whatever. This is just an observation. Let's take care of the building, if you want to maintain a building, let's take care of the building first, the programs that are centered in the community and the surrounding community. I'm not going to say that people from Howard County and Anne Rundle County and Prince George's County and Montgomery County shouldn't come, but you got to pay your way. And you got to maintain the building. It is not just the roof that's falling apart. The cupola's falling apart now. It's just a matter of time. And somebody will call somebody to shame on that, because in fact it is a historic building. And that's just an observation, no criticism. As I said, I looked at the numbers, the numbers don't close, as they say in the architectural business, the lines don't close. It's unfortunate. I didn't expect you to look at that. And again, I'm not an auditor, but I just looked at numbers and they don't close. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Les. Councilman Rick?
At one particular point, and you had all these other organizations in, did they ever offer you any excuses as to why they wouldn't join the National Organization of Children's Boys and Girls Clubs? That was a question that Steny Hoyer asked them many times when they sought relief. And I don't know that anyone has ever heard an answer.
I recall that in order, I actually went on to the National Boys and Girls Clubs requirements, and there are some programs that they have that if they were Boys and Girls Club, they would not be able to operate. I'm not sure if it was football or basketball, it was, it may be in here, it may be in here, but a lot of our clubs, you know, when you say Laurel Boys and Girls Club or the different, many of the clubs in Prince George's County, I think probably none of them are, none of them maybe are part of the national organization.
We asked that question, the answer we got was, I'm not an expert, but there was some things that, to be in the National Organization, you had to agree to. And this club, and many, and many in our county, said that they didn't want to-
It's all boundaries, a lot of it's boundaries.
Yes.
So there is, it provides some restrictions, and again, I'm not an expert, but it doesn't provide enough benefit to outweigh those restrictions. We have it in the minutes here somewhere.
That's right, they talked about that extensively, the boundaries.
And there's three in Prince George's County that qualify to be national, that's a last one.
Wouldn't be able to offer their services to all those people who come from Howard County and Anne Rundle County and-
The other thing that I just wanted to maybe make a verbal note of is a couple of things. Number one, the city charges fees, as we all know, because we get the reports, and I'm sure that there are ways that we cooperate with children that cannot participate. And I don't want to go that much further than that. But nevertheless, we certainly see a balancing of the park and recreations programs to a point where they're within budget. So again, it's just an observation. The other observation that I care to make right now, when they use the excuse that the bus taken out of state for functions provides them the opportunity to be, have their name out there. If that's the case, then why isn't their name on the side of that bus? Observation.
Thank you, Councilman Rick.
Thanks, I just have a couple of questions. You had mentioned that you had toured the facility quite a bit. What percentage would you say is utilized?
I'd say a large percentage of the building is utilized, because you have St., you know, the old, where the old bingo, the senior building, that's utilized quite a bit. The gymnasium area is utilized quite a bit. On the main level, in the old area with the tutoring areas, and they have a couple of churches, so those spaces are utilized.
Dance studios.
The dance studio. So I would say most of the space that is not utilized is in the basement where there was the daycare center. They actually had a, one church who's renting one of those spaces that were in bad condition, a lot of the requirements of their lease was in lieu of rent that they were to fix it up. And I noticed that they had painted it, they had put in new carpet in there, you know, cosmetic. But for the most part, you know, I don't know how many people are in each of these facilities, but I would say the majority of the building was being used. The majority of the building was being used.
One of my next questions was, you had talked about, was the church rentals, because I run into a lot of people that say they attend a church, you know, that provides the service there. How many churches or how many rentals would you say that they have in there? Is there any-
They have, I recall, and it's in the report specifically, I recall they had three or four churches, they have a dance studio, they have the tutoring center, they have the boxing, these are leases.
Okay.
That they have, there was something else near the dance studio upstairs, what was?
Yeah, I don't know. They had some number of leases out, and it's kind of-
All of them weren't under necessarily an agreement, but there was at least seven or eight different entities that are using space within the facility. The one that does have a lease is the St. Mary's, but as I can see, they've broken ground now, right? Are they about to build there?
They'll be out of there next year, the end of this year.
So that's going to, that's going to make their problems that much worse, because that rental income will go away.
So, just two more questions. With what you were able to see in terms of rentals, some may have had leases or some may have had verbal agreements, was there a particular fund that that, where the rental collections were going in, or was it just?
It's part of the income that they, you know, that they report on their tax returns. You don't see it necessarily broken, I don't recall seeing it broken down-
Okay.
-for each of them. I did, there was a question about one of the leases, it said one amount, but why weren't they collecting? Because I saw something in one of the financials that they weren't collecting a total amount. And I think as part of the public record, it was, that was the one church that in lieu of, they were fixing up, they were doing some fixing up of those things.
To be specific, and again, I can't give you the chapter and verse, but the way many of these agreements work, and I take no exception to it, you're going to run a program in there, you're going to lease some space, and as part of you doing that, as an example, let's just say, for example, you're doing a dance program, you would provide back to the club the ability to take on kids from the club and maybe reduce costs or something as payment in kind. So there's lots of those kind of things being done, and, you know, it's kind of hard to get your arms around what the total cost of the lease is.
Okay. My last question is, you had made a comment about, they make enough money to cover their programs, but the biggest thing is not having money for the building.
Yes.
So are there accurate records for like salaries that are being paid?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't recall that there were any salaries-
Very minimal salaries.
-salaries being paid. I think they're mostly doing what they're doing on a volunteer basis.
Right, very minimal salaries.
I mean, for the most part, I, yeah, I think Levitt is, because he's not, he's not, he's not taking any income, but he puts the most significant amount of time into the club.
There's, like in many volunteer organizations, there's a core people, Mr. Russo, Mr. Brown, you know, those folks who give countless hours.
Okay.
And they really do put in a ton of time. I don't, there was a minimal amount of direct salary in there. They also have programs where through the justice program, through the Prince George County, I believe it is, that they get people over there, you know, and then there's-
Volunteer.
Volunteer organization, you know, so they get janitorial services that way.
Okay.
It's a very, it's a tapestry of programs there.
The only person that was being paid now, and I recall, was the person who was responsible for maintaining and cleaning the building, unlocking the building, whatever. It's a part of, yeah, I thought that was the only person that was really, and it was not a significant amount.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Mo.
The report was transmitted after, we received it to all, to all members of the council, other elected officials, state and county officials, as well as to the members of the, or to the President Laurel Boys and Girls Club. My question is, with all the recommendations, have you heard back from anybody within the club that they've started moving on any of the recommendations, any feedback? No?
No.
Okay. Talking about the recommendations, let me just make a couple of comments on several of the recommendations. Recommendations on the engineering of the building, and I think it's important for people to understand that may be listening, we don't, the city of Laurel does not own that building at the Phelps Center, the Boys and Girls Club. That is a private corporation nonprofit entity. The city of Laurel cannot use taxpayer money to do capital projects. That is going to, again, be reviewed by our bond counsel and we'll get feedback, and we'll make sure the committee knows as well what they say. There was discussion about windows and the buildings that we do. We take care of our buildings because they are city buildings, they're city property, they are property of the taxpayers. That's how we are able to put capital funds into those buildings. Do we have all the money we need to put into those buildings? Absolutely not. Mr. Lottsky is asking for money at all the time, for the buildings. And we have several old buildings, one of them is the- One of them is the Anderson Murphy Armory Building, Community Center. We just did the windows there, which were very costly. We've gotta seal the building before we do the interior, as we found out, which is probably what's needed. There at the, at the club, it's an old building, when you deal with the state and you deal with bond money and other things, they put limitations on how far you can go, easements and perpetual easements, I might add, on these things. So, you know, that's important to remember. The city does have a full-service park and rec department. We partner, we work with others, we put in over a million dollars a year. Many of those organizations pay a stipend back to the city. They don't get free fields and all of those other things, as we have done and worked with the club for years. So, those, many of those organizations that testified before you pay a stipend and pay a fee. So, I did wanna make sure that was, is, is part of the record as well. The recommendation regarding the commission, I think, I like that idea. I think it's got a lot of potential, it's got a lot of places it can go, you know, such as helping to coordinate all the organizations, make sure there's no duplication of service. The city several years ago, after being attacked, in my view, that we weren't doing things for kids, ended up moving and doing things for all ages, which is what Park and Recs does. So, a lot of rhetoric is always out there, you know, during election time, that they don't do anything. Our Park and Recs division does an outstanding job. You take the flyer, you'll see that many of the newspapers, they do with all ages, and they partner with a lot of people, just as the club and many of those other organizations do. You can't, no one can afford to do it by themselves anymore. It requires all of us to work together and to help pay for the programs and the buildings and all the support services. So, we struggle at times, and the easiest thing that mayor and council could do is try to find money and give everybody all their money, but they'd all be back asking for more money. So, you know, those are things and limitations that we have that we need to make sure that we recognize and try to better coordinate, and I think this commission is one way of doing that, and I think there's a lot of places you can go with that. So, that's interesting as a recommendation. The city lending money, I noticed in the report, statements made that the city could lend the club or organizations a money, such as a bank. We're not a bank, we're a city government. We will run that through our legal and through bond council and our financial people, but there's gonna be issues to be able to say, I have a grant of, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar matching grant, give me your, you know, we need a hundred and fifty thousand. It's just not gonna work that way. That concerns me, that recommendation. I'm open-minded, we'll continue to look at it, we'll work with council and see where everybody wants to go with it, but I think there are gonna be some real, real issues and legal challenges on that. What I would recommend to the club and other organizations is do what we did. Jan Robinson, former councilmember Robinson, wanted us to put money in the budget for matching grants. We ended up having to do that. I particularly was not a supporter of that, because sometimes in a year's process, the money can sit there. We ended up putting, I think it was fifteen, twenty-five thousand dollars or something, budgeting each year, you know, not a lot, but it was money for small grants that we were running into. So, that's what is gonna, eventually gonna have to happen with the organizations. And we're gonna have, as I said, bond council look on how far we can go on putting bond money into a building for capital, and we'll make sure that committee and council gets that information as well. Again, I think a lot of the things you brought up tonight are important. I think they are recommendations that they don't need to wait, people can start moving in that direction. I think one of the things that mayor and council can do is try to bring in some professionals, open the doors up here in City Hall and say, come and learn about nonprofits. There's plenty of people who'll come and do seminars, there's a lot of nonprofits out there that could benefit for those types of things and find out other grants that are available and those types of things. So, I think that's something else that I wrote down that I think we could, you know, we could take a look at. I think, um, the last, the last thing I think that we can take a look at, and I just saw it on channel surfing, on cable, and the city of Rockville, and Mike, I'm gonna ask you to tell you to look into this, because I saw it yesterday, has a, an account or a fund set up, which is a recreation fund, which allows community and businesses to donate. They were actually doing a commercial about, you know, what the money goes to and those types of things. So, I thought that was interesting, because I know that when we do development and other things, we do impact fees, there are a lot of people that are looking to, to do things that wanna donate money, and we may be able to set something up like that, that allows if this commission gets established, not only the city's participation, but this other fund that they could maybe be able to participate in. I think there's a lot of good things here. I think, you know, to stay open-minded is important, not as, you know, just the city, but everybody, and try to take the report and move pieces of it forward. And I think, again, it wasn't an easy, you're only as good as the information that's provided to you, and I know, you know, Ms. Mills and Mike and Michelle were there. I know that sometimes it can be, it was difficult meetings, but everybody was there. The ultimate goal was to do what's best for the organization, the city overall, and ultimately are those that we provide service to, and that is the community of the city of Laurel. So, thank you all again very much, and, Mr. President, that concludes my comments and remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Holland, Mr. Wilson, I'd just ask if you've got any, any closing comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to, you know, as a representative task force, to thank the mayor, the city council, the Boys and Girls Club, Kristi Mills, Mike Saylor.
And all of the Laurel, the Laurel City Hall staff, the Laurel Cable Network, Senator Jim Rosa Pappy, Councilman Mary Lehman, and Ms. Bridget Warren of her chief of staff, all of these people, you know, helped us do our job, and we all took it seriously. I mean, many of us have kids, and even those of us that don't, you know, we want a better future. And so, you know, I just wanna thank all of you for, you know, recommending that we be on this task force. It wasn't easy, but I think the community was well represented.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, is there any other business for this work session? None?
Next month on.
Yeah, I certainly encourage you to kind of take a look at this. We'll kind of come together again next month and sort of hone these recommendations down. While, just speaking for me personally, I certainly appreciate and respect the work that our task force did and everything they did, and with the recommendations. While I, again, don't necessarily agree personally with every one of the recommendations, as the mayor stated, I'll approach them with a very open mind. I have. I have extensive notes at home that I'll go back over for each one of the recommendations. And in my, my mind and my objective, and I encourage us all to look at it from this standpoint, too, is that we wanna make sure as best we can that this Boys and Girls Club is successful. I think that's, that's really what we should, should walk away from. That was a task force, that was pretty much their marching orders as they gathered information. I think that should be ours as well as a council, as we work with the mayor and administration to help hone these findings, that we want this club to be successful. We don't want it to, as, you know, it's been alleged year after year after year after year, that this city wants to close the club, and nothing's further from the truth. We want the club to be successful, and we want to, through the efforts of the task force, through the efforts of the administration, mayor, and this council, to reach that end. So, with that said, if there are no other comments, counsel?
Well, I think one of the, one of the things I think we have to pursue, since it was a recommendation, and is at least get a price on what an engineering firm would charge us to go in there and to do an engineering survey. I mean, I, I think, wouldn't be hard to figure it out, but that's not my profession, but I, I think we ought to have that piece of information if it can be acquired.
I'm okay doing that, but we're not gonna do anything till the council tells us, say, approve or disapprove of recommendations. That's, that's why. I mean, just to go out and get a bid. And again, part of, part of the engineering fee is gonna be not an open door. I'm gonna need people to sign paperwork, saying we're able to come on your property, we can do certain, I mean, there are some other things that we have to do, but we didn't do anything, we've done bond council and others, because those are what they're there for. But other than that, we're waiting for, you know, approval of recommendations, a or nay, pretty much. And, you know, if the president talks to y'all one-on-one and there's a consensus, I'm okay.
Well, no, I think it's, it's part of the fact finding, that I think that even by going to bond council, that's important.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just a ballpark number.
Is the scope just to determine what is needed to bring the building up to code, or to make it up to code aesthetically?
We'll talk offline.
Yeah, I think so.
Eddie, you're probably talking fifty, sixty.
Easy.
Easy grant.
I just, I just drew in front of you, same thing you're doing.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we'll, we'll put something out. We'll put, try to do a scope first and send it to y'all, see what you think, and then go from there.
And again, I think in any discussion such as that, we keep in mind what the mayor said, and it's been repeated here tonight, is that the Boys and Girls Club is a private entity. We can't just.
Force ourselves.
Force ourselves into their doors, so it has to be sort of a mutual understanding and agreement.
But I'm going on the good faith of the committee, devoting unanimously for these recommendations.
Sure. Well, don't forget, too, the other thing is, this timing may be just about right, because we're in the budget process now, staff-wise, are starting to do CIP and budget stuff, so all of this will kick in, you know, during the next budget cycle anyways. So, yeah, we could, we'll get a scope and send it around.
So, as we clearly see, this discussion will continue. So, thanks for your participation tonight. This meeting is adjourned.